Morning, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting in order. It is 9:12 a.m. Alan, do you want to do the group call first?
District one. District two. District two.
Yeah, she'll, no, she'll call when she gets back.
Oh, okay. District three?
Here.
And I'm here.
Yeah, we have a, we have a form, so be good. Next up is the review and approval of the agenda. I know a couple of items that I wanted to add to it was the homelessness, and I will add that to the old business on the bottom. And also, we will talk about, I talked to Liz already, she's going to get a letter out to all the Cola employees that what we did at this table is we, we told Jenna Lettner to give her thirty more days to put some together a plan for the school. So we'll hear within a few weeks now, so. So, and the employees out there, she will contact HR or the school will contact you, so be good. Anything else we have to add?
I wanted to talk about under personnel, executive.
Okay, personnel.
For personnel.
Yeah.
But I know we also wanted to just powwow.
Yeah.
The homeless. Homeless thing.
Um, do you have anything to add?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Uh, maybe we want to have some discussion on, on the wild race season coming up.
Oh, yeah.
Long enough, I'd like to have some discussion on that.
I think she's on Monica's honor.
Is that on? Monica's honor? Okay, that sounds good.
So, motion to approve the agenda.
Move.
Motion by Umzi, second.
Aye.
Second by Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Start.
Motion carries. Next up is review and approval of the meeting minutes for six twenty-six and seven nine twenty. Do you ever get that crow's face still on the ones?
The what?
That crow's face, remember?
That's going to say help for killer hosts.
Never get any more calls on killer hosts.
Are they even scanning driver's licenses and stuff off the, you know?
No, no. I don't even have to even get the scanning machines. They haven't, I haven't been up there in a while.
I'm going to call them. Hello, if you cast these, they, I mean, we're going to send them because they're taking pictures of the other driver's license and stuff to see what they're, so.
Oh, I know they got that little, that little, and helping they take pictures of it. They've been doing that.
Oh, yeah.
I don't know if they're doing them on the, on that new infrared thing we have.
Like we have up here?
Yeah, but I thought we could show our license or something with that, and it's scanner license or something. I don't know, I just thought that was the software that we had with that, so. But I know they scan their driver's license, and they've been doing that since day one, since they reopened, so. All right, we get a motion to approve the, the meeting minutes for six twenty-six and seven nine of twenty.
Move.
Motion by Umzi, second.
Aye.
Second by Alan, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, next up our reports, and the first off is my report. And I guess what I have to report this, this past month is a lot of good stuff. Hello? Hello? Ray. Raymond.
Yeah.
You're on. You can hear me. Well, I guess if I start off my report, you know, I guess I'll go backwards to, to the first of the month, and I guess, you know, the last few days, I guess, yesterday I was out and I went, I took a ride up to Rush Lake to, to visit the, the day labor program, and that is really, really has taken off, and I know that when I was out there visiting the employees out there, that they're very happy and they, you know, they're excited that we do have a program like this for all of our, our band members to, to be a part of, and, you know, one of the, one of the other positive things with day labor is their, their accomplishments, you know, when they, when they clean up a road or clean up an area, they look at the before and the after, it's like, it's such a difference, and I know that talking to a few of the, the day labor employees that, that they're really, really pleased with the program, and, you know, and when I talked to them yesterday, I said that's just one aspect of where we can move to the next one.
Calling, but I'm on a conference call meeting, what's up?
Oh, I just, uh, can you hear us? Hello, Raymond, we can hear you.
Ray, we can hear your calls. Let's excuse us for that, so. But yeah, the day labor program is going super good. You know, guys out there talking about, you know, the payroll jobs that are coming around the corner too with the, with the hospital and the mom and school and the other projects in a reservation, you know, hopefully we'll be expanding and getting more jobs to our memberships out there through our payroll. So, you know, letting, letting the, the employees that are day labor that, you know, that we can move them to better, high-paying jobs than just the, the day labor, but, you know, as far as I know, there was just a really good, some really good positive vibes out there, and, and everybody seemed to be, you know, really happy about coming to work and getting paid a daily wage, so that was good. You know, the other one I went to was the sobriety, the little beast they had yesterday over at Powell Grounds, and that was really positive, and, you know, there was a lot of people, a lot of good songs, and, you know, I just, I was over there for a couple, a couple quick times, and it seemed like that was going really good, and I, you know, I just, you know, just talked a little bit about my, my own sobriety, so. It was really good, it was positive too, so. And I guess the other things, you know, being, being down this earlier this week, I know me and Secretary Rory were down at the Powderhorn Park, and, you know, we addressed some issues with, with some of the issues with the park board, and, you know, the, how we felt like was the unlawful arrest of our tribal members or tribal relatives down in the Minneapolis area at that park when they were requested to move from the east campgrounds to a different campground, so we just addressed that, that we need more communication with, with the, with the governments, you know, like with the park board and the mayor's office and the county, so I know we, we come down and just made a statement and just said that, you know, please, you know, hear us out and, you know, take care of our people because we do have a lot of Native Americans in that park. We have forty-five percent, and then twelve percent are, are White Earth band members, so we did good on there and we, we supported that, and, you know, I think through, through, through the month, you know, I think it's been, you know, we've been really busy with this CARES Act and, you know, touching on that, I know right now, we're, we're getting a lot of applications are coming in. I know our, our enrollments and then our finance department are doing a lot of processing, and I know that, you know, the checks will be going out, you know, as soon as we get everything into computer and get it going, and we'll, we'll mail it right to you, so hopefully, you know, within, within a few days, weeks, that you'll, you'll start receiving a check. So I know that we're all, we're all excited here at this table too, that you're, that we're going to, you know, help out, do what we can do as our, as a tribal council to our membership, so I want to say be good, and thank you, you go with me. Alan, do you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the RBC and to our tribal members watching at home. Blessings to you and your families, and we are constantly, we've got a good team that's working on this pandemic, and we're doing everything we can to get support out to the membership, and I do have my report, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Are you just going to be printing it out for you guys?
Okay.
Um, but I, I will just.
It's in there.
No, that's not the,
Oh.
That's just a portion of my report.
Oh, okay.
Uh, but to begin with, I do want to comment on getting out assistance for our members, Mr. Chair. I do want to thank you and the rest of the RBC for taking the initiatives to get direct COVID assistance to our members. A lot of families need this help. They have requested this help, and for this, this tribal government to provide that assistance is incredibly important for those families, and, and that. For my report, Mr. Chairman, and I'll just be very briefly, for those folks watching at home, this report is uploaded to the website each month, and it's, you can find it under the Secretary Treasurer tab. This has been uploaded there for two years now. Each and time, each and every time I do a report, I report, I provide it on the website as well. On the, when she finally brings the printout down, you'll see on page four, for fiscal year 2020, Mr. Chairman, quarter three, for governmental activities overall, year-to-date from October 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, the third quarter of fiscal year 2020, combined revenue was one hundred and forty-five point eight million, and expenditures were sixty-four point nine million. On June 30, 2020, cash on hand was one hundred and two point nine million. However, one hundred and two point three million is considered other governmental funds. Forty-three point four million of these funds belong to behavioral health, while the general fund was five hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars. It's important to note, Mr. Chair, for some folks watching at home, that other governmental funds are restricted funds. Those have to be used for their exact purpose, so we, for example, grants every tribe receives in, in other areas. Collective expenditures during this period were sixty-four point nine million, other governmental funds were fifty-four point four million, and the general fund was ten point five million. The, the unedited preliminary numbers are subject to change as the numbers are finalized. For special revenue funds, Mr. Chairman, for gaming, consolidated revenue from Menomon, Bagley, and all of the gaming revenues through the third quarter ended in June 30, 2020, was fifty-five point four million. Consolidated expenses through the third quarter were fifty-five point two million. Consolidated net income was one hundred and eighty-one thousand. Menomon is at eighty-seven thousand in earnings, and Bagley is just at ninety-four thousand. The budget through the third fiscal quarter was eighty-eight point two million of revenue and eighty-one point five million in expenses for budgeted net income of six point seven million for fiscal year 2020 as of June 30. Fiscal year-to-date revenue was thirty-two point eight million, lower than budget, while expenses were twenty-six point three million, lower than budget, resulting in net income being six point five million lower than budget, so we're six point five below where we expected due to the pandemic. Bagley Casino for fiscal year 2020 through the third quarter, ended in June 30, the property earned five point two million in revenue with expenditures of five point one million. Overall, Bagley Casino has a net income of ninety-four thousand dollars for the year, through the quarter. Shoot and Start Casino cash on hand was, June 30, 2020, was sixteen point two million. The cash on hand at the close of last fiscal year, September 30, 2019, was twenty-three million. After Shoot and Start Casino capital improvement projects transferred to White Earth RBC in the ninety-day closure due to COVID-19, cash has dropped by six point eight million. Due to COVID-19, the decision was made to close Shoot and Start Casino in Menomon on March 18. Casinos reopened on June 18 in Menomon and June 19 in Bagley, resulting in zero gaming revenue for April and May. June revenue was seven point one million below budget and expenses were six million below budget, resulting in net income being one point one million below budget for the month. The impact of COVID-19 on the financial results through the third quarter ended in June 30 is a reduction of the property's net income by nine point seven million. It's important to note that these unedited preliminary numbers are subject to change as the numbers are finalized. I do have some notes here as well, Mr. Chairman, for the, and I've asked Scott to come in after I done delivering the report to discuss White Earth RBC CARES Budget Number Three, we tried to, like, try to get that passed today, but I know some folks have some questions about where we're at with the CARES Act funds, Mr. Chairman. As of this report, the total CARES Act funds received by the band are thirty-two million, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-six dollars and forty-nine cents. The RBC CARES Act Budget Resolution Number One has been included in this report and utilizes about nine point seven million dollars of that, thirty-two million. RBC CARES Act Budget Resolution, Resolution Two, which is otherwise known as the five hundred dollar assistance, further expands these funds by using about eight point three million. If this is passed, before this is passed, the remaining unbudgeted CARES Act funds are fourteen million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety dollars and forty-nine cents. That is what we have remaining of CARES Act funds. This resolution that he's going to introduce is seven point one million, so that'll basically put that remaining fourteen million of that, should it pass. Moving along, Mr. Chairman, you'll see in here I've included the resolution for each of those budgets, as well as their, their budgets with the resolutions. I do have some financial inquiries for tribal members. One was related to audit status. In April 2020, the RBC, basically, they were asked, well, where's the status of these audits from the past year? So, in April 2020, the RBC released an executive summary of the fiscal year eighteen, nineteen audits. A copy of the executive summary can be found on the White Earth website and May 2020 Secretary Treasurer Report. Also, that, that was, those audits were adopted and accepted by the RBC in April. There's also, I did discuss with Legal and with the Finance Department information request process. The Legal Department, I've asked them to develop an information request process that will facilitate requests for tribal records and information. Once the policy is approved by resolution of the RBC, band members will have a streamlined mechanism to request general tribal information and finances, which are subject to governing laws and regulations regarding privacy. And this will be important for, for band members to have a set process to say, like, I want to know what's going on with, with this information from, like, they want a copy of basically anything. And so they can say, all right, here's a process, fill out this form, and it will be facilitated, so if it's like related to Scott's department, he will facilitate the request. If it's related to behavioral health, they'll facilitate the request. If it's related to the Legal Department, the, any, any department, Police Department, you know, basically it'll cover, it'll just be like an information request process. Because the complaints that we're getting is that we request this information, but there's no follow-up, right?
And that's, that's the hard part too, I chime in too, is like, you know, we get, especially as council members, that we get lots of complaints about ICW or, or, you know, something to do with finance or something to do with any of our divisions. Because I think that form would be very, so it starts to have paper trail, and that's the one thing I tell our membership, if you have something that, to, you want, you want me or any of the council to look into or, or whatever, please, you know, send me an email so I can send the request out to either the division so we can start to have paper trail and that timeline. And I think this is probably a good process that we can do for all our memberships, so if they have any type of complaint with enrollments or, or road service or anything, if we have a form and you put in, you know, the boxes of all our divisions or other on the bottom, you know, those are things that'll sink, and, and we should have someplace where you can even, you can even, and I'll be glad if you even CC me on it, you know, that, that start that form, and I think a lot of us come from housing or from constituents or from our elders division that they need help with a road for, for something. But these are the things that I think that if we have problems with any of our, we feel like our departments are, are failing, I think those are things where our council, we need to, we need to know what's going on, so I think it's important that, that, let me start this process.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Continuing on with this report, there was a question related to campaign finance. A band member has requested the Minnesota State Campaign Finance Report for candidates running for state office. State campaign finances are separate from tribal finances. The member is directed to contact the appropriate committee and treasurer, subject to state campaign finance rules and regulations. Moving along to section two, which is on page twelve of this report. Mr. Omlid has provided our annual audit for the, the last fiscal year. There are some highlights that I'll just read off here, and these are included in your packets as well. From the, the highlights, the tribe's combined net position increased by thirty-one million, a fourteen point five percent overall increase. The net position of our business-type activities increased by nine point one million. Net position of our governmental activities increased by twenty-one point eight million. This large increase is due mostly to the growth of our Moms and Max even services programs. The casino enterprise transferred eleven mil, eleven million to governmental activities as a distribution of profits. The tribe's overall liabilities decreased two point four million, long-term debt decreased two point four million. The casino had operating revenues of ninety-six million. This is a one point two percent decrease from last year. And net income before distributions, eleven point four million increased three point one million. Other program revenues totaled approximately one hundred and thirty-one million, and general revenues, which include shared taxes and interest income, totaled eight point six million. Governmental program net position increased because revenues exceeded expenses by fourteen point zero five million, and net transfers were seven point eight two million. Starting on page thirteen, all the way to the remainder of the report, you'll find a copy of this report that has been provided by our, our, our auditors at Brady Marks. And so, Mr. Chairman, this includes my portion of this report. I'll just ask that for a motion to approve this report, and then the second request I have, Mr. Chairman, is related to RBC CARES Act Budget Number Three, and I'll let Scott read that, Mr. Chair.
All right. Can we talk? Can we read?
Yeah.
Ray. All right, motion to approve the, the Treasurer Financial Report.
Motion.
Motion by Ray, second.
Aye.
Second by Alan, all in favor?
Aye.
Alan?
Motion carries.
Please, please, Chair, if I could, please, can I wait, be the last one here? I'm on my phone with a lady who's going to set up a deal for a bargain.
Yeah.
So if you could just keep it here in the left.
We'll do Umzi then you, so.
All right, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Richard.
Okay, so do you want me to start now with the CARES Budget Three Resolution?
Yeah, but you were supposed to give us itemized, uh.
Isn't it included? Am I being signified?
I, I didn't bring it down.
Okay.
Because I never got it down from Legal.
I'm going to be back in two minutes.
Legal review it? Legal needs to review it because he had some changes that needed to be referenced on the resolution.
Okay, so Legal needs to look at it too.
And he brought it, and he brought it down to Legal.
Table come next weekend, or? Yeah, I mean, uh.
I can see if Veronica has it ready.
Okay, well, we'll put it at the end of, end of the agenda if we want to, so.
Yeah, the only, the only change that I wanted to see here, Mr. Chair, so he's proposing seven point one million for this third round. He's got the casino, behavioral health, natural resources, water and sewer, education, ICW courts, Cola facilities, health, public safety, marketing, economic development, enrollments, ambulance, and legal. He does have a line item budget in here as well. I talked to him yesterday about it. And they have said that the, the subcommittee has reviewed all of these. They're recommending approval. However, there was one line item here that I would like to maybe ask the RBC to consider. I'll hold it off on it because I would like to explore the other possibilities. So, right here, Mr. Chair, so if you look here on this whole thing, they have on the very bottom White Earth Credit Union.
Yeah.
And so, I know that's, it's like a, it's like a tribal business, but it's not like a White Earth tribal business, and so what I would suggest the subcommittee do is generate a process that the RBC could consider for those tribally-owned businesses that may be affected by CARES or COVID. For example, I was having breakfast this morning, and I just, I was talking about this, and a lot of our members at home are daycare providers. Just little moms and pops that we license. These are tribally-owned businesses, and I imagine they have expenses related to COVID, you know? They got to keep their places clean. They got to get, make sure the kids are taken care of, and so if we're going to do it for one, we should consider doing it for all, right? And so, if that's something that the RBC would consider, I would recommend, that would be the only thing to recommend, to pick off until, until a more stringent and equitable process is developed for all tribal businesses.
Yeah.
You know? So, Scott, I was just talking about the line item.
Yep.
And that I was recommending to the Credit Union, the table from the budget, because we want to create an equitable process for all tribal businesses on the reservation if we're going to go down that route, so that was the only comments I had made. I'll turn, I'll turn it over.
Okay, so, so we put this resolution together. We have departments that asked us for different things that related to equipment and capital assets and things of this nature. We had a committee that included Veronica, Pat Butler, Tracy, myself, Niko Graf. And we reviewed everybody's budgets and looked at the CARES Act to determine how the money can be spent. Couple of the big issues is you cannot build buildings. You could remodel some buildings probably to do some things. You have to have it completed by December 30th, so we figured it'd be better to plan to have it done by December 1st because there could always be delays. Because they have to be in-service and operational. Same with things if we buy, they have to be delivered to us and operational before December 30th. And we looked at all of these things and the things that qualified, and we put them on the list. So this total, including the fifty thousand that was to the Credit Union, was seven million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand. So, if we remove that fifty thousand, you know, it's just under seven point one million. On page two, I have a summary of the different departments, their totals, and how much they are. And then the summary sheets follow kind of the things, what they are. There's a lot of things here that relate to communication and laptops, our computers, our notepads, both for tele. our notepads, both for telehealth and for education, remote distance learning education. There is a very large number just for COLA, it's about $760,000. But they themselves at COLA have received about $650,000 or $60,000 directly from VIE CARES Fund. So they are requesting 125,000, but I put their whole $760,000 list in here. Their CARES Act money is a little bit more, less stringent than ours, because ours can only be for purchases that were made after COVID started in late March, theirs can go back even earlier than that, so we're identifying those things. There's a lot of things that make social distancing, you know? It's about social distancing, it's about prevention and trying to keep people safer, it's about telling that, it's about tele-education, things in education. They put in there the worst-case scenario, the scenario that it's 100% distance learning. Now, I don't think those issues have been decided yet, and if there is education onsite, maybe they won't need to buy all that stuff. They put in stuff for other schools, for tribal enrolled-member students that go to other schools, because they're worried that, they're not sure if those schools are gonna provide laptops for learners. And so if they don't provide it from their school, education, they would like to provide those children with them. Now, if those schools provide that equipment directly for our students in their school, there will be less spending there. You know, so.
Mr. Chair. Scott, excuse me, Scott, with all this technology, we're gonna buy, where's our, our wires, what do you call it, electronics or, you know, car lumber or?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're supposed to build a little computer thing up on Main Street and?
I know, I did see the first, their first, um, that came through Paramot, so I know they're up there doing.
How come we don't, how come we don't make them the vendor and buy everything from them?
Well, we could. I mean, we have not identified vendors yet. So if these things are approved and we start making these purchases, we, we could purchase them.
Well, the other, the other thing I wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, on the, under the natural resources budget, there, there 800, 817,000. They had a cultural line item on here.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Hundred thousand for six villages remodeled, some office for cultural centers, storage, training for spiritual healers, cultural resource experts funded. So I asked Scott about that. What, what did the committee say?
Well, when we visited with Monica, she doesn't need a building or anything of that nature. What she needs is office space in hopefully each of the villages, and more of this hundred thousand probably is for spiritual medicine, to, you know, have a secure location, but to have this spiritual, cultural medicine available in every location. Then hopefully we have those cultural people in each community that can provide this service to them.
Well, the other thing, Mr. Chair, is that these, we, I asked, I said, hey, these are, these are, these are all eligible expenditures, financials?
Yes.
Everything on this list?
Stuff on this list and would be eligible. And the one thing that we, if and when it's approved, or which things are approved, before we purchase, we are gonna give from that department director some documentation on how they're gonna use it, so that we have documentation before they spend money, because sometimes people are slow to provide it afterwards, and we don't want, we wanna have a, basically a hook put together, so if it's audited, the information is put together before the questions come up.
Absolutely, and then the other question I had, and I know it was brought up this morning, was legal had taken a look at this already, did it?
Veronica was in on all of the discussions, and weigh in on this one.
I have some questions. Under, under the wild rice, it says 175,000 for truck and trailer for, I think, rice finishing and food security, but I guess we're gonna discuss that when Monica gets here, but I would like to know if someone could use some of that CARES money to purchase wild rice for our members, you know, and then, I know we had discussed it the other day, we, we could use it, but we wouldn't be able to resell it, we'd have to give it away or whatever.
That is my perception, and I'm not a lawyer, because when you, you are not allowed to use CARES money if you're gonna later bill somebody else for it. So if we were gonna use it and we gave the rice to the E and P programmer, we gave it out through the food shelf, that would just be, buying the rice and paying for the finishing would be similar to we're going to Walmart buying food, but we're giving that food away. So if we were gonna sell it, say, to the USDA or members, I think that would be fraud, but that'd be a question for Veronica.
You know, I'm just concerned because we have a, rice season is like a month and a half away, and we have a whole shitload of members here that depend on this wild riceing for pay their bills and feed and clothe their families, and I think it's important that we look at this more seriously and try to see if we, even if we gotta give it away, at least we're, we're trying to help our members, you know, we need some of that money to purchase wild rice, and, you know, if we have to give it to food shelf, we give it to our members or whatever we can do, I think, we need to look into that. I think now is the time to start, to, you know, before it's too late, get something in place now, you know?
And that would be a legitimate expenditure completely, especially if we were to give it to them free. And Ronnie could weigh in, but if we could sell it, but that, that would be a big question that you could pay for.
So, so I've got two requests, and Mr. Chair, and Scott and the subcommittee there is come forward with two, two, two separate resolutions, one related to small business, the other one related to what Umsi was just talking about there. Like, I mean, they're both timely, they're both needed right now, and that could be something to take a look at it next week, maybe hopefully if you guys could have it very next week.
We can look at the, the one with small businesses, we're, we're gonna have to have some direction or think about what we're gonna ask the people, the business, you know, how they're impacted, because there probably are some businesses in the country that have, that have done extremely well because of COVID. And there's others that might be just the opposite, there might be some that are on the verge of bankruptcy and maybe not reopening or trying, just trying really hard just to keep their doors open.
Well, the SBA loan program was also available, as we talked about yesterday, you know, 500 or fewer less, and we're gonna pay that back, and, you know, if some of these people apply for that, you know, that would benefit them also. I'm, I think that's all we've over and done, but now though.
So over and done, it was done pretty quickly.
Yeah.
You know, and I think, this is a perception, I don't know if it's true, but there was a lot of talk. If you were a small business owner and you had a good relationship with your bank, your bank probably pushed your application in. If you didn't have a good banking relationship, it might've went on the bottom of the stack, and they might've had no chance to get along.
All right, so you have those two resolutions for us, or please come up to us next week?
Yep.
You know, another thing I, I like, I think you should, we should take into consideration also is, if we put this, utilize some of this money for the wild rice season coming up here, and let's say we have two major storms come through and wipe out our total rice crop, are we still gonna be able to fall back and be able to use that? You know, to, how is that gonna work?
I have a mind of a question with wild rice, but?
And I think legal has to look at it too, you know, that's just some questions I have.
You know, you cannot?
Yeah, no, that's a good question, Tom, because I'm getting the same thing, because that rice up here is looking really good, but the water level over there, if a storm happens to come through, a good windstorm, it's gonna blow a lot of it down, because it's coming up nice out there. People are worried about that rainstorm or hailstorm and come through and damage it and wreck it.
You know, you can help, Sam.
There's also rumors leading on that we're gonna pay $4 a pound, I don't know where they dropped that, I guess that's somewhere else that they're also.
Well, I know last year we basically paid $3 a pound the whole time. And if you consider that, when rice first comes in, it comes in about at 30% finish it, and in the end it comes in about 50. When you're buying rice at 30%, and you're paying three bucks a pound, and you're paying about to finish it, a finished pound costs you about $11. If you are buying rice that is finishing at 50% and paying $3 a pound and finishing it, that one pound of finished rice costs you $7. Now, you know, there's not a lot you can do about that, you know, because that's just a percentage of finishing, but 30% costs you $11 and 50% costs you 7, that's, that's a big difference. But, I mean, you cannot pay a per cap if the crop got ruined, I mean, just like we're doing now, we're doing a member assistance if they've been financially harmed by COVID. Now, the question would be is if we got a hailstorm and now they couldn't harvest rice, is that a COVID problem? I, I don't know if I could answer that. I can't answer that immediately at this point.
Anything else for Scott, then?
So do you have other questions on the list? One of the things we put on the list was Rice Lake Community Center is $50,000, was to, we add some equipment and add water and come into a couple of offices down there, and we could use it for COVID testing, and at the same time, I wonder if IHS could use those offices then for?
Minus.
For their proposed one-day-a-week at this time.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just make the line item.
You know, Scott, we're, you know, we're talking about economic development, you know, giving, give, basically giving grants out to, to entities that are in within our borders of business, you know, and that, I mean, we look at using that same process of giving grants to our, our solid waste, the department for trucks, and, because they don't make a profit. I mean, these are the things that we have to look at, and I know, me and Umsi have been, you know, we've been contacted by, you know, solid waste to get a truck or a truck, and I mean, these are things that I, I think that if we can maneuver this money in to a different way, we could actually get these items for some of these departments, maybe something if we could add something like that to this, if we're looking at doing a grant.
Well, I think what we wanna say is we don't wanna call these grants, because all of a sudden, there's a lot more requirements. But you have the right to assist, and it's not a grant, it's just you can give money to businesses that have been financially affected by COVID. If they've been financially hurt by COVID, you can just give them money, and, and we don't call it a grant, it's just?
COVID assistance?
COVID assistance.
Yeah, 'cause I know, we, we always get geared about, you know, the equipment that we have over there is kinda old and beat out, and, you know, we've been, as council, we've been trying to look at different things and, and ways of trying to assist our divisions that, you know, anywhere from our public roads or roads department to our sanitation, that, you know, we could upgrade some of their machinery, you know, for the future, because those are, those are the, the mechanisms on our rez that we need, you know, we need our garbage hauled away, we need our roads graded, we need our roads. So these are things I, I, I'd like to see more of that than, you know, trying to.
That's correct, the casino being shut down for sale, and I know that's where we heard the sanitation department, you know, they haven't, you know, they haven't produced any garbage up there, you know, so.
So we're, we're feeling some shortfalls on these items, and I know that helping them and also getting an upgrade in their equipment would be something I would like to.
Well, we did ask Banya Hogan if we could use?
I see my report.
Yeah, but I mean, we, but there's other ways of.
But it's not to be careful of the lights.
Yes. All right, be good.
Very careful. And then I see the report saying that we, from Veronica, I guess you guys seen that on GHS.
Yeah. The, that's pertaining to the alleged overpayment?
Yeah, we're, we're gonna be meeting this, I think, real quick, I think, with these late on approaching the, the governor, Lieutenant Governor, so. And we're gonna check all the governor into his words, so he, when he said twice that he was not, he was harmless, you know, all this harmless that we're gonna hold him to.
He can just, he can just?
Yeah.
Do it to us.
And, and that's what I think that, you know, I've, I've been talking to the team too, and, you know, I think that, you know, that we, we all, probably all, so maybe next week, some council will just all, you know, assuming that, well, sound and our report is up to the commissioners, so.
Yeah.
But the governor can direct the commissioner how he wants her to decide.
Did you wanna work on this resolution till next week when we?
I think we're waiting for a thing from Veronica that's?
Yeah, I just let her know that she just had to change that amount, so maybe, if she brings it down.
Oh, she's happy, she passed it up?
Yeah, she said she reviewed it.
Fifty thousand.
That's it, that's the only modification.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to pass it along with the?
With changes?
What to change it?
I have a motion by Umsi to, to, we gotta be nice if we, can we get her on the phone list?
Yeah, she's confused.
If we just connect to you, because those memberships, you know, if we undo the process right, then we're gonna get checked.
It's Veronica.
Hey, Ronnie, it's Liz.
Hey.
I got you on speakerphone, I'm here with tribal council.
Yes, I'm watching.
Oh, okay, so the resolution is the, the CARES Budget Three.
Okay.
So all we need to?
I think that that one was submitted on the 22nd, if I remember right.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the date that, so the original one, if I remember right, was submitted for the meeting last week.
Yeah.
And that one was the 7,000, 71,000. And then the one that was submitted yesterday that we updated was the one for the 7,121,000. So I, I think that the one for the 7,000, 71,000 is down, is, is, is there, but I can print off another one and bring it down.
Yeah, because if you remove the 50,000, it's 7,000, 71,000.
Yep.
Ronnie, did you bring that to Ayesha?
Uh, we have brought it down last week.
Well, the only change, Ronnie, that we just made was we just took the 50,000 off for the credit union, and now it's 7,000, 71,000 again.
Is that good, Veronica?
Yeah, is that, you reviewed all these line items and all that?
Right, yep, and I, I provided my legal opinion too, I would say the date, the July 22nd, and so the 7,000, 71,000, and that was before we added the credit union on there, but we had to discuss the credit union also, and so we knew that that would be up to RBC discretion. And so the 7,000, 71,000 has, has been reviewed by me consistently with Scott and Tracy, Pat and Nicole and myself. And so that, that whole, that whole wish list from the divisions and departments is good to go.
So you recommend an approval?
Yep, 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 yep.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Veronica.
Yeah, I'm very kind of confused.
Okay, motion by Umsi, second?
Thanks, Ronnie.
Second by Alan. All in favor?
Aye.
Well, motion carries.
Do you have, do you have, can you update this resolution and bring it back to us over here today, and then they can sign it?
I'll get, I'll get it from Ronnie.
Okay.
Thanks, Scott.
I think the district reps are up next, I think, Wade is on a call, Kathy's out, so Umsi?
No, I think, I'm, I'm down with it, I'm up there.
Okay. All right, Ray.
Okay, good morning. Good for everyone. You know, I'd just like to say, be good to the people of District One for being patient and the COVID there. You know, we got a lot of people in and, you know, I do appreciate you all coming in for, to help, let us help you in getting your COVID-19 in. The bat cell today from nine to three, and then after that, they will be at Bingo Hall in Menomone. And I believe the little dipper has got a notary up there. The tenant will probably have to be mailed in or you'll, you'll have to bring them to a waiter yourself. But also, um, to. The Pine Ben and Rice Lake Cemeteries, you know, I'm still getting hammered on those about getting them done, you know, because in Pine Ben now, they're, the last one, they had to bury right along the wood line. And all they need is a area pushed open over there so that they can add to the, to the gravesite. And the one up here, all we're waiting for is to get the solar panels out, the razors, so that we can start using it. Because we can't get our bat goes into either one of these cemeteries now. And I've been bringing this up for the last two months or so, but lately now, I've been really getting a lot of calls on that. So I, so I just let the people of District One know that I am working on that. I'm not, I'm not just sitting back, so I am working on those. And as soon as we can get them done, we will take care of those. And then also they were wondering if, if they got, if the county council bought another dumpster up here, if they would have to pay for it or if we would pay for it. Because that's what they're planning, a lot of garbage that's being dumped out. I know most of the writers, you know, housing houses are on the, on the garbage route. But a lot of them aren't putting them out because by the time they put them out, the dogs get them, so the doors out. Before the truck gets there, and then they get tore all apart. So then they fill our dumpsters up and then we don't even really have the room for our own really center to dump them. But I just wanted a question also that, you know, maybe we could discuss at a later date or. But otherwise, everything seems to be going good up here in District One. A lot of questions about this and that. And there's one I forgot to put on the agenda this, this morning, Mr. Chair, but I will bring that up in executive. But otherwise, everything's going good. And I'd just like to say, be good to the, for people in District One, you know, for being so patient with us in this COVID. And I believe it's going to take up to at least three to four weeks before you can get a check. And please be reminded that you do need an ID and your tribal enrollment number. Nigret, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ray.
Hey, Ray, I just want to have something to say that for any of that cemetery work, you got to go through the TIPOL office. And there's a process that you have to go through. I mentioned that, probably two or three meetings ago or several times.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I remember that, Uzzi, and I, I guess I didn't get that TIPOL number. Or maybe I did, but I might have erased it. So if you could give me that number, Liz, or if you could check with Liz, if you don't mind.
Because I, I ran into that same problem, so I'm just warning you ahead of time, that's the process that you have to go through, you know, to. Because they don't want to, they, they won't do no tree, they won't do no tree removal or anything like that unless there's, all the paperwork's been filled out. And, you know, the ground's been checked and tested and so.
Liz, recheck in the Snyder Lake.
All right, thank you, Liz.
Oh, be good, Ray. I asked Liz too to check in the Snyder Lake graveyard road. I know we had some problems with accessibility to get back to that graveyard out there, some, some growing on the road or some.
I think Bowman did address that.
I think he did, yeah.
What did he say? Did he have to get TIPOL too or?
No, because they were going to, oh, I'm going to go back to my memory. But he was going to, he went back and he looked at it and I thought that the road was overgrown some. But they, it's small anyway. And he said that even if they, the cost associated or to widen it, because it's a very thin road. So people are trying to get back there with cars, but it's too. You know what I mean? It's overgrown. So they tried to clear it as much as they could, but he said you really aren't going to get a car back there.
Okay. All right, I'll also check in my call on that one too. Okay, thank you.
I'm just looking for you. I haven't got much to report on, just like this, to thank everyone for being respectful when they're calling down here during our COVID relief fund program, which we started, I know we're getting anywhere from 150 to 300 calls a day down here. And our staff was doing the best they could to answer everyone's questions and trying to be respectful. And I just want to thank everyone for, for their patience, for doing our best we can to see to it that everybody's taken care of. The Castle Lake area up there, they, they've been busy, you can have two from what I've been hearing, a lot of people coming. I was down at the clinic, checked out the new project down at the clinic here last week here. It's come along nice, so it'll be a good facility when it's done. It's, they're going to be done for quite some time, but they're making some very good progress down there. The footings are in and some of the steel structure is up and the infrastructure is, some of the infrastructure is in. So it's coming along nicely. I just want to let everybody know that before you plan on anything, any gatherings or anything like that, all we ask is that you contact the emergency operations center for their protocols on what to do. If you're going to have some kind of a feast or some kind of gathering. Just to be on the safe side, that's where, we're not against anything, anybody holding any peace or anything. But what, like I said before, what we are against is bringing COVID into our communities and, and lots of lives. So that's all I ask is if you're going to plan something, please get in touch with the emergency operations center. They have protocols in place, you know, for stuff to do and be great.
Okay, thank you, Uzzi. Next up is Scott Stevens. Is he on the phone?
Scott, are you on?
Take a break, do you? Want to take a break?
Yeah.
I will take a break. I'll take a, a quick 10 minute break and we'll be right back, so be good.